30, we'll call the August 24 Loudoun City Council meeting to order. First item of business will be our invocation led by Reverend Amy Cook from the Loudoun United Methodist Church. We want to thank you for your service to our community. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Colonel John Franklin, retired from the United States Marine Corps. Thank you for your service, sir. So if everyone could stand with us, we'll have the invocation and the pledge.
Lord, we thank you that we have been called to your service. We thank you, God, that you have called these who are here with us now to care for the community of the gathered here. We ask, Lord, that we would have a special sense and strength of that calling. We could lead in your wisdom. Send your Spirit here among us and let us be free from that joyful obedience which comes through Christ. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
May I ask, Reverend Andrew over there, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you both for your service. Thank you for being our guests here tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Bibens.
Here.
Councilmember Rooster.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. On behalf of the council and the staff, I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how their government is doing business. We appreciate that you've taken time out of your own personal schedules to be here tonight to see how our city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you do not have a copy of the agenda, you can pick one up at the table here in the front of the room. This is your guide to the topics we're going to discuss tonight. In order to conduct efficient business-like meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens Input, where anyone who has signed in to speak to council is encouraged to do so. We do have or ask that you wait until you've been recognized by the mayor. After being recognized, please approach the podium and address the council. Please observe these three simple rules. At the beginning of the presentation, please state your name for the records, and please address all your questions to the mayor as the chairman of the meeting. Please avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once this portion of the agenda is over on Citizens Input, the council will proceed with the meeting. You're welcome to stay and observe, but be advised that public comments may be limited. We ask that everyone remember we're doing the people's business here tonight. It's a very important responsibility for all of us. You can help us do this business by observing the rules we've established. Again, welcome to the Loudoun City Council meeting. We're glad you're here tonight. Those that have signed in, first is Chip Lynn.
I just wanted to lend my encouragement to the siren system that we're about to be looking at. And the main reason is I want to dispel the fact that cell phones are our answer for everything because they're not. If you would, Nicole showed that first picture. This is a picture of the cellphone tower, the main cellphone tower in Athens. Just a few years ago, when the tornado went through and started down around C and D tire on Highway 30, went straight up the hill and got some of Athens Utility Board stuff, and this is the result of the cellphone tower. Now, that in itself is not totally crippling, but the thing is then you're vulnerable to a second wave of storms. So if you have a storm go through it, knocks your communications out, you have a second wave of storms come through, you're unprotected. That's where a siren system would really pay off for us if you would go to the next one. And AT&amp;T even had to borrow some temporary towers from the Gatlinburg fires that were going on about that time and move them to Athens to be able to get cellphone service restored. That only restores telephone service, not the data service. So then again, some of these newer technologies that we have that will text you or email you may not work for some time. We were still having problems connecting for ballgames in Athens four or five months later. And I just hope that we will look at this siren system and remember that we have a very mobile group of people that live here, a lot of sports going on, a lot of outdoor activities, fishing, things, a lot of things at the lake. And people don't always have their phones, and even if they do, they don't always respond to what they hear. So I just hope we can look at it very seriously. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chip. And I want to make a correction. I skipped over adoption of the agenda before we have the next one come up. So the agenda was mailed out to everyone. Everyone had an email copy of that. Is there any corrections or additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll ask a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, adoption of the agenda passes. Okay, next one to that signed in is our recent new hire, Director of Public Works, Michael Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to be here and for the opportunity to take the position. Just to introduce myself, again, as you said, I'm Michael Hogan, originally from Fountain City, North Knoxville, but have been familiar with Loudoun for most of my life. You welcomed me with an email, and I mentioned that I've taken my kids here to get ice cream and enjoy the community. So I'm looking forward to that and being a part of that community. And hopefully, as you've seen by my resume, that my past experience will serve me in that capacity. I've worked for a large firm in the state with Barge Wagner after graduating from UT in 2007, and worked on large industrial sites, residential, commercial sites, and continued from there to another firm, which also does commercial development but specializes in environmental, which I think particularly in this position could serve the community well. I've designed landfills and characterized waste and have an engineering and environmental background in that. And from there, I've continued to hone my engineering skills at a firm that you secured the services for to work on your riverfront. And I was very, very blessed to have that opportunity and reached out for a project that I was working on in Athens to a friend of mine who works here, Larry Joe Dockery. Sent him a text and was looking for contact in that utilities board. As nice as he is, he picked up the phone and gave me a call and told me how well he was doing here and how much he enjoyed it, and passed along the information that this position was open. And so I became excited about it and was excited that you all chose me to be here. And so I look forward to starting next Monday and hope that I can be of service, and that's what I look at this position as, is public service. And so I'd like to humble myself to that position and provide you any information you might need to make decisions that you need to make as you plan for the future of Loudoun. But ultimately, on behalf of my wife and two daughters, I'm thankful to be here. So thank you for your time.
Glad to have you. Do you have any questions for Michael?
I'm very excited about the landfill experience because I'm on the solid waste mission. So I was very excited to see someone with some experience in that.
You did have Michael's resume. You know he worked on the turf at UT, I guess. Did you ever paint the checkerboard?
I did. I did. That's, I've had, that was one of my careers, but actually did that while I was at UT. Painted the checkerboard and the T and the hash marks and all the numbers.
He's got to be. We're very excited, Michael. Very excited you're here.
Thank you. I was excited to see us pop into the top 25 today, too.
I was, too. Yeah, that was a good sign.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, July 27, 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a question.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is fuel bid. The low bid for the purchase of fuel, August 5, 2020, was received from Rogers Petroleum for the projected amount of $10,337.80. Gasoline was $1.28, low sulfur, undiied diesel, $1.29. What's the pleasure of council on the fuel bid?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the fuel bid. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the fuel bid for Rogers Petroleum. Is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance and second reading of amending the 2019/2020 budget. Manager Ross, you have anything to add on that?
This is the second reading. The first reading occurred in July. Now we're in August for the second reading, and the reason is this amends the previous year's fiscal budget. And we're tying up loose ends. As you can see from the key items, we're accounting for differences in the budget from what occurred versus what you passed. There's fire department overtime and some equipment repairs in the amount of $17,700. Some grant dispersments, lump sum retirement dispersments, as well as a drug fund for a police vehicle purchase. You approved a single vehicle in the budget, and then there was a second one purchased with the drug fund, and this just ties all that together.
As Manager Ross said, this is a normal occurrence at the end of the year to tidy things up. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments on second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a second? Any discussion, any questions? Okay, we'll ask for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Rooster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Motion carries. Also on second reading, we have providing for the provision of planning support services.
Yes, that first reading of planning support services was in July, and that's when this body first acknowledged the expiration of the interlocal agreement with Loudoun County for the provision of those services. It's also this body's job to decide what services are delivered to its citizenry, which is why we've set it up in this section as an ordinance request allowing the city to assume planning support services.
Okay. As he said, this was passed on first reading back in July. What's the pleasure of council?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Rooster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, it's ordinance on first reading, is amending the 2020/21 fiscal year budget.
I think I'll blame COVID. COVID is a good excuse for anything right now, but during the budget process, maybe some ideas weren't fully articulated, that maybe didn't gain the traction that we all desired, and for whatever reason, they're not in the budget. And now these ideas are being more vetted by this council, many of which are being considered tonight, and we wanted to allow the financial ability to purchase these items in this year's budget. There is a state grant. It's related to COVID relief of $158,000. From these proceeds, based on council's workshop discussions, and in this agenda, $105,000 would be transferred and appropriated to public safety equipment capital to purchase the proposed siren system. Separately, this budget amendment appropriates an additional $400,000 from the Courthouse Square fund balance to fund certain downtown improvements, namely the possible expansion of parking and the possible purchase and installation of downtown lighting for the perimeter of buildings.
Okay, remember these are just moving from one fund to the other, allocating it so it can be spent.
Could we not separate them?
Is that a budget amendment, sir?
Yeah. You got two on one.
Essentially, it's, these line items would be amended in the budget ordinance that you passed. So it's a small spreadsheet that will amend the larger spreadsheet.
So we're going to go ahead and take the $400,000 out of the Courthouse Square and move it into the...
Right now, it's in the Courthouse Fund Reserve. By this budget amendment, you're authorizing it to be spent in this year's budget, and it could very well be spent should this body decide to contract for those procured items, the ideas that we discussed, namely the parking lot and/or the lighting project. It's not a commitment to purchase, it's an allocation of funds. You do not have to buy anything, but you're giving yourselves the financial ability to do so.
You're allocating the money in case you do decide to spend it for that.
This question from Nicole. Didn't that $158,000 go up one bit in the same...
No, that was $158,000 if you want change. That was an initial grant. They did change the, initially, they wanted an application, and it was restricted on what you could use it for, and they changed that so that it can be used for anything. They did announce last month a second series of grants. We're eligible for up to $86,000. We've attended the webinars on how to go about reimbursing that, applying for those reimbursements, but it is for specific COVID-related expenses. So that's the basis of that.
We are on track to get it.
We have, we've done everything we need to do to be in a good position for that. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on first reading to amend the 2020/21 fiscal year budget with these items that are listed.
One more question. On the public safety, that may go up because we may have to do some adjusting on those sirens. We may wind up at four instead of three. Can we just go ahead and allocate the whole $158 for the siren system?
That's absolutely possible, yes.
Well, I'd hate to get them to come back and say, well, we need five more thousand or whatever.
And we can also change the number during second reading.
Okay. Any other questions before we...
Well, in the event that some of these items that are on this list don't materialize, what happens if the fund balance of $400,000, where does it go then? What do we do with it?
At the end of the fiscal year, if it's not spent, it will return to your general fund budget.
To move that over.
Okay.
Yeah, as Manager Ross said, we're not obligated to do any, spend any of this. It's just really moving the money over right now so it can be spent.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget amendments. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a second.
A great example, just to simplify, you fund a salary schedule and a certain number of positions. If a position is unfilled, that money's not paid out. It just, if the position is not filled, it just goes back into your general fund budget.
Okay, good questions. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rooster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. And we will schedule a public hearing to address that on 6:25 on 9:28. Okay, next item is a resolution which is approving the lease purchase of a 2021 Pierce Arrow XT pumper from Pierce Manufacturing, a new fire truck.
Yeah, this is a resolution. This is authorization to move forward to contract for procurement. This would be done through a purchasing cooperative of a pre-bid item. Our Chief Brewbaker has done an excellent job negotiating for this particular Pierce apparatus, and you have budgeted this year for a lease purchase arrangement, which would break up the payments over several years, but you're authorizing the down payment this year in the amount of $134,874. That would set us up for five annual payments of $104,189.97. And according to Chief Brewbaker, through his superior negotiation skills, he's talked him down an additional $25,000. So those are revised amounts.
Good deal.
We have a motion there.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The lease purchase. Okay, is there any questions? Everybody understand how the purchase agreement is going to work, and the down payment, and the payments going forward? Any questions about any of that? Great job by Chief Brewbaker getting the best price possible, so this should set you up for several years to come, correct? Okay, we have a motion and second. Do we have any discussion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Next item is approving a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of an industrial highway.
Yeah, Economic Development Director Jack Qualls came to your workshop and explained the significance of this project as it relates to the intersection here. This is the entrance to the Sugarlimm Industrial Park off Highway 11. As you can see, the many buildings there with the gray roofs represent the residents inside those, inside the industrial park. Directly across the street from Highway 11 is proposed a new boat manufacturing facility, which would bring a great deal of traffic there to and from across Highway 11 to the industrial park. What we'd like to do is partner with TDOT to have that intersection constructed using state dollars. And it's called a contract, but you can think of it as almost a grant application. It's a, we've talked about the intersection and lighting at ramps at I-75. This is a different bucket of money. It's more tied to economic development and job creation, but this kicks off the process of making us eligible for those funds.
If you remember, was one reason we annexed that section for this purpose, so...
No matching funds from the city on the track.
Yes, there's always a cost, and there will be significant utility relocation here. We estimate it at about $90,000. That's just an estimate at this point. We don't have engineered plans and specs, and...
As far as the construction of the road and all that, that's, we're not out in the money?
I don't believe so at that point, but again, there is utility relocation, and we'll negotiate with the economic development client for aid to construction on that. We'll just see where that goes. I hate to be vague, but it's economic development, and for whatever reason, you know, it's intentionally vague. Jack Qualls couldn't be here this evening. It's not absolutely necessary that this passes tonight. He'd like to table it for a month. He said he definitely needs it in September, but again, this kicks off the process.
Is there actually a contract in top of?
Not that I've seen, no. I think contract's probably a poor choice of words. I spoke at length with Jack this morning. He couldn't be here this evening, and I said, hey, this got to happen tonight. He said, no, it doesn't. So if you'd like to set the table for a month, feel free. I know you're at an information deficit. I think we all are. We acknowledge that.
You could just about use an intersection there now, you know, with the way it is.
Yeah, I'm not against it at all. I'm just, it looks like all the funds probably would come from TDOT except for what runs off. It will, he signed the highway there, you know.
I can't tell you exactly when, but this kicks off the process, and it will end with a contract. You know, it could be October, November, but eventually, you know, TDOT will present us with an agreement like Highland Avenue with the specifics as to what TDOT is going to be responsible for.
The only thing that bothers me about it, we was on track for a traffic light at Southmount exit ramp, which is a big problem. Now, all of a sudden, that traffic light has gone away, and now we're going to put one, and we'd allocate, we voted to allocate the money for the traffic light at 75 Southmount exit on 72, but I don't know how it just went away. You know, I know we can't explain it because I tried talking to Jack about it.
It's, one thing you should take comfort in is it's not totally gone away. I think it got, it got lost in a complete redesign of I-75 between here and where it turns from two lanes to three lanes on each side. That planned expansion of I-75 is in the design stage, and I think our exit ramps that are impacted by that got lumped into that. We've since gone back to TDOT and asked to separate that out as a safety priority and go ahead and get it done, and they are considering that now, and so that's back in motion.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of council? Do you want to vote on this tonight, or you've heard Manager Ross say it could be tabled? If we want to table it, we could vote on it tonight.
Yeah, it's still just not clear on what to vote for.
Let's just table it, though.
Okay, motion to...
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Ten seconds. Okay, have a motion and a second to table this till September. Is there any other discussion about it? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, so we'll table that and bring it back up with more information in September. Okay, there's going to be an alarm go off at 7:00, so we're going to take, if it's okay with the council, we'll take a five-minute recess to listen for an alarm.
Hi, my name's Joe Collison with MCA. I'm here with a demo siren from Wheeling Engineering. This is designed to output warning tones, and that can be for things like weather, hazmat events, or any other type of emergency. These things are stationed strategically around cities and counties to provide outdoor warning for those in the outdoor areas like parks and, uh, areas like that.
About, uh, less than half mile radius, well, we have proposed for, for loudness, uh, a mile, 6,000 feet, well, over a mile, but 6,000 feet. Um, the model that we've proposed from the design is what we call Vortex, so it's directional. So, you can kind of think of it as like a flashlight versus this one more like a lantern. So, it's a 360, uh, continuous 360. Uh, so, there's differences there, but, uh, the power, um, you know, the idea's the same. It's still a battery-powered system. You can, uh, use it during emergencies, uh, as, as he mentioned, when things are, are down and out, but I think we're going to try again. Is he moving it?
Yeah, after 30 minutes, I think he's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and to be, you know, clear again, I mean, it's easier to forget, but, you know, it's an outdoor warning system, so it's, it is designed for, you know, to be, for outdoor warning purposes. Uh, we would never design or, or promise a design that would, you'd be able to hear it indoors. You know, this is for the outdoor public, but...
Okay.
So, if you want to...
Sorry, everyone here, guys?
I made a pardon.
What's that, what do you think about it?
Oh, I just copied him on the radio. But for a point clarification at 7:30, yes, that's scheduled, was, we wanted to make sure that that location would work good for Loudoun Municipal Park. So, I've got folks at Loudoun Municipal Park to listen for it, so I don't, I don't know if we would, would hear this at 7:30 here, but, but, but we should be able to hear it at Loudoun Municipal Park.
Okay. All right, I guess we can go ahead and, okay. We'll call our meeting back to order at 7:03?
I'll sit strong and get over there.
Yeah. Um, the next item on the agenda is establishing the development fee schedule.
Yes, included in your packet is a list of fees for, um, planning and zoning services. Uh, they range from $100 to $200, and, uh, they can, uh, go up to $500 based on the per-acre price, depending on the service. These are very much in line with what surrounding jurisdictions, uh, charge, specifically, you know, Loudoun County and the North City.
Okay. We saw these at the workshop as well. Does anyone have any?
I make a motion with it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to accept the fee schedule. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Councilman James. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion about the fee schedule? Okay, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Next item is amending Resolution 2020, 2021, amending the pay classification plan adopted June 20th, June 22nd, 2020.
Yes, this, uh, is in connection with the second reading of the ordinance permitting planning services. This, uh, next resolution authorizes the compensation for, for the employees whose job descriptions will be changed, uh, to deliver, uh, these duties. Uh, it's approximately four individuals. Uh, you've got Brooke Millsaps, Travis Gray, Nicole Curtis, and myself. You have budgeted this year $25,000, uh, to provide for these services. Um, what we're proposing is $17,500.
Okay, and I think the question was at the workshop was, um, a breakdown of job duties, and I think Manager Ross sent that out to everyone. Did that answer your question? Councilmember Bibens?
Um, yeah, for the most part, yeah.
Okay. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council to amend?
I make a motion to re-approve it.
Okay, have a motion and have a second. Remember, a second just brings it up for discussion, it's not for vote.
I'm, I'm on second for discussion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution for the pay classification plan. And again, this is under the $25,000 that the city has been spending for this service with the county. Any questions or discussions?
Uh, the one thing that I would like to, to state is, I'm not saying that I don't think, that, you know, people are going to be doing their jobs or anything like that, but I think these first few months especially, we may be in need of the East Tennessee, uh, planning services, and that $25,000 would go a long way with that. That being said, I think when our new budget comes out next year, that that's something we could look at then, is going and doing a, a raise on those employees. That would be my, what I would like to bring to the table.
Well, there's, there's certainly going to be required to do, you know, more work, uh, that's been added to their job description.
It's a long time to have to wait to get, uh, paid for the increase in the amount of duties that you're going to be responsible for.
And, you know, another way, I guess, to look at it, the city's still saving money other than, you know, the $17,000, not $25,000, that we have been paying for the same services through the county. And I know it was, I guess, Councilman Brewster mentioned about the utilities splitting that with us, and, and discussions with Chairman Campbell. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Campbell, I think their viewpoint is, cities pay this this whole time and not ask for utilities to share that $25,000 expense. What's changed now?
Because we're going to do it right.
Well, I mean, I, I see his question, you know, it's still under that amount that we budgeted.
I don't think that the city can vote to give a pay raise on a utility salary. We can do on our side of the salary what we pay toward those, but I don't see that we even have the authority to, to say, "Okay, we're going to pay, uh, give a raise on $100,000 that the utilities are paying us." I don't even know that we can even do that.
Well, for, for decades now, you've been authorizing the pay to county employees to do the same services. So, what's the difference between a county employee and a utility employee?
We don't have no resolution with the utilities, anyway. But the resolutions go outside of that.
Attorney, Ford, do you have any, any, uh, add to Council Brewster's?
Well, I had trouble hearing, uh, Mr. Ross. What did you say, the county? Is that what you were saying? So, we've been doing it anyway with the county?
Um, planning services, planning and zoning.
Yeah, but you just used an example of another, what Councilman Brewster brought up was that we'd be voting on a 5% increase that took into account a lot of utility money.
Well, the...
And you used an example of what?
Well, he said that under previous agreements, we've been paying county employees to perform planning and zoning services.
Okay, I was off there. So, I think that's what's the difference, I guess, as well? I mean, I see what Councilman Brewster is saying, but, you know, all this resolution is saying is they're going to get a 5% increase of their annual salary. If part of it, you got to determine what their annual salary is. If it's both, it would be more than a 5% increase for, for purposes of just city money, because you're basing it on both. For Mr. Ross's example, so, I mean, if you look at it like that, it would be more than 5%, but whatever you approve, the city would be paying, and so, I mean, if you know the number, next to the total of 17,500, um, the city would put that entire 5%, which would tuck into account utility and the city salary.
It's, it's a sum certain of $17,500?
Yeah, total is so low that I don't see, I see no problem with it if we know what number we're voting on, what that 5%.
Are we voting on the city's portion of those salaries? Are we going to vote to give a 5% on what the utilities are contributing to those salaries?
Because that would mainly be increasing our percentage of what we pay.
The sum certain of $17,500 is calculated using, uh, each person's total compensation.
So, it's the total compensation is 17,500 is the total for all four employees, taking into account their total compensation. Yes. Yes.
So, that would be increasing the city's percentage of what we pay to the, to employees who are split between the city and utilities.
I would agree with that. I mean, I, as a non-order opinion, the city has always gotten a great deal for a lot of these split employees, so it's not, uh, I don't see an issue with it, as long as you know what the number is, and we know the total is 17,500.
That 17,500 is not going to change?
No.
Right? Whether it's city or utility, boy.
It won't change. You're the only...
In math, what you're paying, the city is paying for this service.
Yeah, it can only change if you change it.
So, when a plan goes in, you got subdivision coming in, Tiger's a master one, it comes to you, then are you not going to meet, if you got a lot of utility, are you not going to meet a lot with the utility board and say, "This is what's coming, what, what's your intake on it?"
Yeah, I'll coordinate the service that the, that the county used to perform.
And why wouldn't the utility board want, want to do that? Because you're having them just as much as you're having the city side of it. Is all the city going to be involved in this?
I would say that.
On the planning side, now, they need to support them for the city. All these, the planner is not working for the utility.
Yes, it is. Most of its work will be involved with the utilities, because you got an underground, you got water, you got sewer.
Yeah, that's fair. All these plants...
Services only take place within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Loudoun. Loudoun Utilities extends far outside the districts. You would have essentially Telco Village residents and, and others, uh, in the district subsidizing a city service.
That's not part of the city plan, that's in the county.
Does it, would it make, would it make it easier to, to make it three employees, instead of four? I'll take my name out of the, out of the loop.
No, Kai, if you, if you're, you probably deserve the money. I'm just, I'm just a sticker that the utility board needs to contribute to this.
I disagree totally. I disagree totally with you.
Why?
Because the planning service is not offered through the utility.
You don't know how the new setup is.
It's offered through the city of Loudoun.
You don't know how the new setup is. He's going to meet with the utility board people. He's going to meet with, with electrical, sewer, and water. There'll be meetings he'll have to go over these plans with and get their input and how it's going to be, so it's not just city.
Just as if, if we were still with the county, they would have to meet with the utilities and also...
That's why we've hired the county.
That's why you pay the county, or you're going to pay them less than what you're paying the county. And he's still working for the city.
But do it like Manager Ross did, uh, people outside of the municipality plan subsidizing that amount.
But I agree, I don't think Manager Ross should take his name out of that.
No, he shouldn't. Definitely not.
Nicole, if we had to call in East Tennessee or any other planning service agency around, where will that funding come from?
This lineup of $25,000 is earmarked for these types of services. When we talked about that, presented that contract a few months ago, this conversation first came up, the only scenario we envisioned having to use that is if there was a question of annexation, and even then, we did the annexation for the Malibu property without their assistance. That was a, that's just a lining up of resources to make sure we are equipped to handle anything that comes to the city in, you know, rezoning. But day to day, the general request for variances and rezoning signs, what have you, we have already, we were well equipped to handle this.
Well, and I remember at the, their, their fee, East Tennessee Foundation was like, it's an hourly rate, it was like only $75 an hour or something like that, and they just bill us very, you know, so it'd just be an hourly rate that they would bill us for services rendered.
I mean, I just remember when we were talking about it, we were talking about how costly it could get quickly.
Yeah, well, like I said, we can manage it on an hourly, hour, hour basis, and it's only going to be, from what I understand, an emergency kind of thing, where it's something outside of our realm.
When we went, when we first looked at this, we went back through all the agendas that the planning commission handled for the last two years. Number one, there was a lot of, you know, tremendous amount of activity, certainly something that can be handled. And number two, it was, you know, it was a straightforward rezoning, our variance request, things that were very comfortable dealing with and capable to deal with. Then the East Tennessee Development District, that was presented just in case there is a question that some, one of the four of us cannot answer, and we would reach out in that instance. And again, that was a, that's just being over-prepared in the, for the worst possible case scenario.
And just to know we had a resource to land us up when needed.
There's a, there's a comment from the World Wide Web. Why is cost-saving provoking so much resistance when spending over $100,000 and $400,000 for other projects? Question mark. It's not questioned. Question mark. Thank you, Nicole. Under this proposal, city has extra $7,500 to cover additional expenses.
Who's that from?
Loudoun citizen.
No name?
No name.
Then you shouldn't read it. I mean, it is, you know, still under what we budgeted, and we know there's going to be more work involved for the people that's bringing it in. I say send it back to utility board, even if it's...
Well, as we're organizing and relocating the files, this is, this is about keeping the records of the city and coordinating property, uh, characteristics of, of each parcel of property within the city. It's about coordinating that with the county assessor's office and the register of deeds. That, this is a documentation process. The part where it touches the utilities is more like a handoff that's always existed, but keeping up with the documentation, managing the ordinances, keeping the, uh, forms and information available to the public for any questions they have. I had a lady come by today, and she had a question about, it was actually a codes enforcement question, but she didn't, she didn't know what the question was. We sat down and we had a conversation, and I was able to sort out what she was really asking and get her in the right direction. That is a city service to the city resident, and he did not interact with the utility side. I don't know if that helps with perspective on this, but this is about managing the, the records of the city and the land that is within the city limits.
We could go ahead and pass it and then approach the utility board, and, I mean, because, I mean, if they don't, I think we've, we still need to compensate them. I feel like it's, it's our responsibility, we're taking the planning services on in the city, so I feel like it's mainly our responsibility to...
The utilities is not taking the planning services on.
No, I think we're, we're taking that on.
It's strictly this is city of Loudoun, and, you know, if I thought it was, the utilities taking this on, I would say, yes, they, they need to go in their share, but they're not. I mean, it's just city...
I mean, the utility's share would probably just be around, what, $9,000 or something like that. It's, it's split pretty much down the middle of the 17,500. Any other discussion? Again, I'm, I'm in favor, but I think it, it moves it forward. It's, they've done a lot of work to get it in-house. We're ready to start providing those services, and I think we need to start paying employees for the extra work that they're already doing and going to continue doing, so. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Bibens?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
No.
Councilmember James?
No.
Mayor Paris?
Aye.
Three to.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Number, the last resolution is authorizing the purchase of property from H. Bowen Carey Jr.
Yes, this was discussed at your workshop, and, um, what's shown on the screen is just one option. Uh, this is definitely not the plan. Uh, we just wanted you to see a boundary, a boundary line survey showing the property that's being considered for purchase, uh, along with what some parking spaces might look like on top of it. Now that Michael Hogan's on board, um, we'll get into the nitty-gritty on this, uh, in terms of plans, specs, quantities, and we'll come up with a good cost estimate, uh, for this project. For you tonight, for your consideration, is a commercial contract, and, and this contract has a 90-day, uh, due diligence contingency period inside of it, uh, where, where these, these specifics can be, the feasibility of the parking lot can be explored. Uh, if it's not to your satisfaction, uh, you don't have to close. Should you find a plan, uh, that meets your satisfaction, you can close, and, and the price, uh, according to the seller, is $53,500.
Okay, remember, this is just, we're just approving or voting on, um, a purchase agreement. This does not mean we're purchasing the property. This gives us, uh, opportunity to go forward with total project cost and things like that. Feasibility to see if this is something council wants to... feasibility, to see if this is something council wants to go forward with. So all we're voting on tonight is to approve a 90-day feasibility study and enter into this person, this purchase agreement.
We're voting to buy tonight.
If we don't have to close on the property if the, after the 90 days, if we don't like what we see, we do not have to purchase it, correct?
Yes, Councilmember James and Councilmember Brewster have both expressed a desire to be involved in the planning of this parking lot. There's a giant off-ramp in this agreement, should you choose not to go this route, or can choose not to enter to the agreement. These are just provisions that I've worked through with the seller to give them some assurance that we're interested.
And again, this is, this is due to a lot of merchants I know have contacted me and complained about the lack of parking. This is just, this is just an option that we have to provide that parking, if it's cost-effective to do so.
We can do our due diligence and feasibility studies without according to the agreement, can't we?
I agree.
I mean, that's.
We could, yeah, but, I mean, you know, if they, I mean, they could also sell the property. I mean, with this agreement, they would not.
Maybe you can get more than that out of it than allowing.
Up to them, yeah.
I mean, we've got Michael starting Monday, he can, that could be his project.
He can get the plans drawn, he can get the cost estimate out, that's for sure, but the one thing that I don't understand about this, which confuses me, and Attorney Ford, you can clear me if I'm wrong on this, I have bought pieces of property before, and wasn't sure exactly when I was going to want to take in charge of it, and a couple of them right here in Loudoun, and I put up an earnest money. And it's, it's, and earnest is just what it is. I mean, if you, if you, they'll hold that property until such time as you desire, and you both agree on a date and a time. And it's just a written letter saying that, you know, I paid $500 earnest money to this property, and I'll make a decision on the 27th day of November 2020. And you don't have to drop an elaborate contract, because he won't sell it unless we say we don't want it, you know, at that date and time. And a contract, I'm confused as to why it has to be that way. I'm just confused.
Which one?
Is that we have to have a written contract when, when I think just to put down earnest money, would hold it for whatever date we want it to, and have everybody agree on the sign.
You can do an option contract and hold the property for 90 days, but I will see where we're paying earnest money this time, aren't we?
No.
So we're getting, we're getting an option contract essentially for free, because normally an owner will ask you to put the 500,000 or whatever for the option.
And if he decides he doesn't want it, he keeps the 500.
Right.
But, I mean, to me, that's, we don't know, and I can tell you confidently that I would not vote for it, if we see a parking lot that's coming into 2 and 1/4 million, just do the parking lot part of it, because that's going to push it up to $300,000. And, you know, I just don't believe we need 20 parking places. If you divide, let's just say you've got 200,000 in that parking lot, and you divide 20 into 200,000, what's each one of those parking places going to cost at the end of the picture? $10,000 a piece. Now, is it worth that, and do we need it that bad? Or is there something in this town that we could spend that $10,000 on that would help a lot more people and do a lot more good? And that's where I'm coming from.
And that we won't know till we get the total project.
That's true, and we won't know, and there's no way in the world, but I, you know, I've read the contract probably four times, and I see anything, I don't see anything in earnest binding for us, nothing whatsoever. But at the same time, it could have been a lot simpler, and it wouldn't have to be a contract.
Basically, it's a purchase agreement without any earnest money, correct?
Right. So it's a free option contract, so it is, you get under 4A, you get the feasibility period for 90 days, get the drawings and cost estimates, and then whether or not. We can do that out of the contract, and we're worth it.
We can do that without a contract.
You can.
We've got a licensed engineer starting Monday.
You can, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily, you know, because we all know each other, we know the owner, we assume that we could have access to property, properties without any distractions, you know, if this was anywhere else in the world, the owner would say, hey, off my property, you didn't give me that $1,000 for the option contract, but we're certain that he'd give us free access to it, to whatever we want, during that period of time.
Well, if we decide to go ahead and take the property, that earnest money goes toward the reasonable purchase of the property, and you don't lose it if you buy.
Right.
It just goes toward the purchase price. You only lose it if you decide that you don't want to take it for whatever reason.
Here, there's no earnest money involved in this.
Right. I don't know, I mean, it's six and one and a half dozen of the other, it really is. But I don't, you know, I'm not against the contract, I just don't understand why, but I mean, not against it.
Like I say, this is.
We've got to have something, we don't, we don't want to go to the expenses of getting the tax off and expense and everything like that, and what we're ready to go on it, well, you know, I got to buy her, you know, or something, you know? And that could happen, I know that it's not likely, but it could happen. But if, I mean, if a contract suits you guys, and that's what you want to do, then that's all we'll do.
It's up to councils.
Makes you feel better, then we'll do that, I mean, you know?
I think we all agree, we need, before we vote on anything final, we want to know the total project cost.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you, it's not worth $253,000.
Bottom line, we've got.
It's not worth that.
The purchase of land, it's not a bad price. I would tell you, if I had a huge fortune, I'd buy it, you know? But, you know, I don't, and.
Been a troubled piece of property too for years, just kind of sat there. It's not good.
And, you know, we have had it appraised, and we know what the appraisal value is, we know, and like I say, the price is below that, purchase price is. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion to authorize to enter into this purchase agreement for this property? Say, do I have a motion?
I just hate for us to go into this and spend some money and it not be feasible for what we're wanting it for.
I'd make a motion to amend this to say we want to go ahead with doing the feasibility study on it, and then if Mr. Carey gets a better offer than what we're paying.
Not to interject, but, you know, when we concede this transaction, Michael Hogan had not even applied for the job.
Right.
And so I think we're in a much better position to deal with this now. I think we can deal with it much faster than three months, and so maybe that's the, if it's the best solution of all, is to direct our resources towards getting our head around the feasibility of the parking lot and report back to you at your workshop.
Okay.
I mean, I would hate to hold Mr. Carey up if he were to get an offer with us waiting on a time to have a meeting, so if, you know, if we weren't able to take it within that 90 days, if we're outside of our feasibility study.
You just want to table it for a month?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that even tabling is the right thing to do. We can do, what you were going to say is.
Yeah, I wanted to amend it to say, make a motion that we proceed with our feasibility study on the parking lot, but not entering into the purchase agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to amend that, and we have a second to her amendment.
What's the amendment?
That we move ahead with the feasibility study for the parking lot, but that we not enter into the purchase agreement.
With the landowner.
I was saying that.
I guess it's similar to what you said.
That's saying that Michael needs to work on equipment.
Right, and then report back, report back to us with the total cost of the.
At your workshop. Did you get that, Mrs. Allen?
I'm trying, does it have a feasibility study?
For the parking lot, but not entering into the purchase agreement for the property.
That's a legitimate motion.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any questions about the motion? Everybody comfortable with it?
Move ahead with feasibility study for parking lot, but not enter into an agreement.
Purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement, yes. Is everyone clear before we vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. And I think as Manager Ross pointed out, at that point when we talked about this, Michael wasn't even on the radar, so. Guess you know what your first day's going to be. All right. Next item on the agenda is an appointment. I have an appointment to make to the Loudoun Planning Commission to replace Lee Ann Chahas, who is asked to be removed due to work constraints. We are appointing, I'm recommending that we appoint Linda Hawkins to that, she has agreed to serve, so we'll appoint her to that board. Do we need to take another break here? We have another?
Wait, now, are you leaving?
Oh, okay.
Joe will be bringing the trailer back to the parking lot.
Okay.
So if you all had any questions and want to see the desired person, Joe will be here with the records of.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Eddie McCallister has a beer board report, I think.
Well, Chief Webb, let you all know that in March, the police department did a beer stain, and they had five citations for underage sales. The beer board met on August the 12th, and we handed out a total of $3,500 in civil penalties to the five different businesses, ranging from $1,500 down to $250, depending on what we felt the circumstances were.
Did any of us have their license pulled, or?
No.
Didn't, okay.
They have the option of paying the civil penalty or taking the suspension. They normally.
Pay the fee.
Pay the fee.
Any questions for, for Mr. McCallister?
We appreciate you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your work on this.
Every $500 you can do something with it.
Yeah. Thank you, Eddie. Next item is department reports. Chief Webb, you want to?
I was going to tell you to start us off. I had an off-duty police officer at the old high school football field, he's got, his son plays Little League, and the first test that we set off, he said they could hear it really good up there at the old high school football field.
Where was it parked at? Where was the?
Oh, what we did, we moved it up here to Protomet, because this test unit that they have is rated for a 4,000-foot radius, the one that they've quoted to sell us is 6,000 feet radius, and so that's why we wanted to move it, you know, within, because at 6,000 feet, we're right on the edge right here at City Hall on that 6,000-foot radius, so we wanted to move within 4,000 feet.
Okay.
And so we set it off at Protomet. And just a reminder, we, there's no problem to move these when we want to position them wherever we want to, because they just put it up on a criollo pole, and it's a standalone system, so whenever we get the system, we can determine where. So the second test at 7:30, I wanted to do it specifically to see if they could hear it loud and municipal park, and so I had folks at Loudoun Municipal Park so they could hear it loud and clear, and I got folks over in the Robberston Springs subdivision that told me they could hear it loud and clear over there too, then, of course, over around the River Road, Queen Road area. So the second test was successful.
Successful, okay.
And like Sarah said, Joe's going to bring that, that unit back here if anybody wanted to look at it or had any questions about it. So on the police department side, real quick, I'm going to tell you, I've got two things. The first thing, I guess I get the negative part out of the way, we had some automobile burglaries this weekend, about a dozen automobile burglaries this weekend, Friday and Saturday, had some firearms taken out of some folks' vehicles. Now, the good news is, night shift caught the guy that did it and got a confession, and so he's working with a detective. They also had some burglaries in the county, so working with the sheriff's detectives too, to try to get all the stolen property back, but we've not recovered all of the stolen property. One of the reasons I wanted to bring it up in this meeting is to try to get the message out to folks that is a big deterrent, just like, just like this fellow that we captured here on this set of circumstances, he wouldn't literally break into locked vehicles, he'd just walk him around in neighborhoods and going through cars that are unlocked, and that's typically what happens in these sets of circumstances, so I want to remind folks, keep your vehicles locked up at night. And so to get the bad part out of the way, get to the good part, is Safe Wise has come out with their rankings, and we're number six safest city in the state of Tennessee. So I can, I can just want to remind everybody that I always try to thank the folks that live in Loudoun, because they work together with the police department, so we have a safe community, and we try to work together to make this the best place that folks can live and raise their families. So we, we, back in 2015, we're the safest city, and then every year since then, I think the lowest we've been is number nine, so we stayed in the, in the top 10 all those years, and so I give a lot of credit to the folks that live right here in Loudoun.
Thank you, Chief, for your effort and your leadership.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, Chief Rubeker?
Just one thing, Mayor, wanted to make you all aware, we're partnering with BMW Post 5150 for the second year in a row now to do our 9/11 ceremony, so we'll be doing ceremonies on Friday morning, September 11th at 8:30, and I'll send a flyer out, an email to all you all, but I just wanted to put it on your radar, we recognizing firefighters of the year, police officers of the year, sheriff deputy of the year, and our guest speaker was a forensic investigator during 9/11, so he was actually up there during the, doing some forensic investigating, so that'll be, again, Friday morning, September 11th.
Okay, all right, and you'll be sending that information on that, okay?
Director Harrow?
Hi, Mayor, I guess you made me go last, so I'd probably be the longest up here.
That's right.
We did have River Fest this past weekend, and I think it was a huge success. It wasn't the success we've had for the last 13 years due to COVID, but we did have a good turnout, the manager was there, he seen what, what it was like to have limited you if you were there, all of you that were there, I don't want to start sing-along out, folks, but again, we were happy with what happened, and the people that were there seemed to be very happy as well. The vendors done extremely well, the new firework show we did this year was well taken by the community, we had a lot of good comments about it, I haven't had any bad comments at all. So it starts with you guys, and it continues from the manager all the way down, the good support was the fire chief and the police chief and those departments, we all work hand in hand. Michael didn't even know this, but we done firework show to welcome him Saturday night, and he got up here and he spoke earlier, but I wanted to tell him, hey, thank us for the firework show, but he didn't know about that. Again, it was a great show, and we just wanted to thank you guys for the continued support. One other thing, and I meant to send it to Nicole for some slide presentations tonight, we have completed the major signs at the interest of Lions Club Park and Loudoun Municipal Park. That's an investment we want to do at each one of our parks, they're really nice, we're identifying our parks. Something that bothers us quite a bit is people come in and they say they'd like to reserve a shelter at Jiffy Park. Legion Park was there a long time before the Jiffy was ever built, if it was going to be called anything, it'd be called Miss White's Park. So we like to have our parks named and called the way that they are, and so that, these signs will help that, they're well lit, they are, they're stone and rock signs, and they look very nice, and again, we plan to do the Liberty and Legion next. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Your staff did a great job with River Fest as well. Nicole, you have anything?
I don't know if I can follow Mark or not, I'll do my best, and congratulations on River Fest, it was wonderful. In the accounting department, we wrapped up our year-end as of June 30th, we've made those final entries with your final approval of those budget amendments for last fiscal year. We now move into the audit phase of the books, so we'll be kicking off that process with our auditor, and you'll have those reports shortly in the coming months. Property tax notices, I received an email from our vendor today that those will be going out in the next couple of weeks, they're waiting to get a little bit more information before mailing those out, and that is what funds everything that we do in the city, that's what keeps Buzz Fire Trucks and River Fest and everything else, so that's what's happening in the accounting world. Thank you.
Thank you for the county department's work. Director Brown, you have anything to bring up? We've already welcomed Michael Hogan, so he's a new hire, we also had another new hire in the water, in the utility side, Todd Davis, I think he was hired, what, three weeks ago? Was it Chairman Campbell? So that's another new hire. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Bibens, you have anything on Solid Waste?
We're same old, same old.
We're same old, same old.
Okay.
Not much has changed there.
Still in discussions, right?
Still in discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Dixon?
On the planning commission, we only had one that came in the variance. Nathan Scott wanted a variance on the, at the design church up on Cedar Street. It's between Cedar Street and Mollant Street there. It's on the corner, is one of the variance of 10 feet and 15 feet from the front. He actually didn't want the 15 feet from the front, but that's where Carly said that the variance had to come from instead of the side.
Side.
So that's what we did, is give him a variance on the front end. That's all we had from the planning.
Okay. The recreational advisory committee, Councilman Brewster, do you have anything to report?
Ron Ballard going to come back with a report on the rec center?
Yes, you should have that in September.
In September?
Yes. He said that should be done by the end of this month.
And then the benefit advisory committee, have they ever met? I think it was supposed to report in August.
Well, Vice Mayor Dixon is the chairman of that body. And had three or four meetings, sir?
We have. We met on everything and the last meeting was Wednesday and I wasn't able to attend. But what we did get back, I just received that today, and it's just giving an illustration of all the costs that we've had, we've asked them for our, what would you call it?
Well, I ended the meeting in Councilman Dixon's absence and they were discussing the benefits of self-funded versus fully insured.
Yes.
And basically, self-funded was the better option.
How are we on the ketchup jar theory? Are we losing ketchup?
We're still looking at all avenues, the stock cap, where we had to pay $65,000 per member before they would pay out anything. That's what we're looking at, the possibility of raising that, either $75,000 or $100,000. And they're supposed to come back with some numbers on that.
Yeah, they discussed that, and some of the information's in that.
Yeah, maybe in this.
He discussed that, I'll just give it to him tonight.
So that's what we discussed a month prior to this.
I guess my question, are we going into red again? Do we need to take action?
I went to one meeting, that was last Wednesday, that's in your absence, that's the only...
I don't know what the...
That's the only one I've attended.
There's always going to be probably a 5% to 6% increase per year here on, no matter what you do.
Vice Mayor wasn't there, but I encourage the body to make a recommendation to you all in October.
Yeah, that was, they're going to be in September. September the night, they're meeting at Fire Hall, I think. And going to try to wrap up and bring a recommendation in October.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Brewster, any other report? Okay. Councilmember James, you have anything to report on?
No.
Okay, some closing comments. We got quite a few people that were hired in August. Anniversary-wise, these are some folks, if you see them, just congratulate them for their years of service in August. Brian McFalls, five years with the Loudon Fire Department. Sean Bivens, 12 years with Public Works. Jason Bivens, no relation, I don't think there, are they? Maybe distant, who knows? 14 years, Public Works. Billy Roland, 24 years with the Maintenance Department. Mark Harvey, 25 years, Loudon Fire Department. The old timers, Kenny Riddings, 29 years with the Loudon Police Department. And on the utility side, Ryan Moore, he's the new kid on the block one year. He done a lot in one year, I'll tell you that. He's in the accounting department. Clifton Henry, three years with the Electric Department. Chad Lane, seven years, wastewater plant. Brian Lindsey, eight years, Sewer Department. Tony Thompson, 16 years, the Water Treatment Plant. These next two guys were hired on the same day. Clay Townsend, 23 years. And Lynn Davis, 23 years. One's in the sewer and one's in the gas, but they have the same anniversary date. And then the last but not least is Chuckie Hughes with 25 years and he's at the wastewater plant. So several employees with a lot of years of service there. We want to thank them for their years of service. I think Vice Mayor Dixon has some birthdays this month as well.
We do, we have several for the month of August. We got Melissa Huskin had a birthday, let's see, what is her? August 23rd. And then Brendan DeBour had a birthday with the Police Department, August 23rd. Bill James, August 22nd. Ryan McFalls, August 24th. Matthew Porter, August 2nd. Robert Simmons, Fire Department, August the 9th. Jason Bivens, August the 7th, from the utilities. Clinton Houston, RCB, August the 7th. Larry Miller, August the 18th. And it's Jay Ward, Jason Ward, August the 9th. Brian Lindsey, August the 4th. Clay Townsend, August the 6th. Larry J. Dockery, August the 17th. Chris Dotson, August the 21st. And Kathy Riddings, August the 16th. Wish all those a happy birthday.
Okay. Okay, any other closing comments? Councilmember Bivens, you have any closing comments?
No.
Councilmember Dixon, you have any closing comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember James, you...
Actually, I do. I would like to congratulate the Parks and Recs on the good job that they've done at that River Fest this year. We had a better fireworks than, that we used to have, we had last year. And the crowd wasn't as good, but it was, it was still a good crowd for the situation that we're under right now. And I want to commemorate them. I know they put a lot of hard work into it and it was real nice. Thank you, guys. You've done a great job.
Especially in the circumstances we're in.
Yes, under the circumstances.
Okay, is that, no, you have, okay, Councilman Brewster, you have any comments? You good? Megan?
Yes, sir.
Are you good?
First, I know we've got that public hearing scheduled. I'm happy.
Okay. Manager Ross, you have any closing comments?
I would just like to read a thank you note from Ms. Joyce Fields, President of the Dunbar Rosenwald School Foundation. Dear Mayor and Council, the Dunbar Rosenwald School Foundation members, take this opportunity to thank you for your generous contribution of $25,000 to replace the roof at Dunbar. The shingles for the roof have been ordered and work on the roof will commence upon their receipt. We look forward to future communication with you as efforts to restore the school continue. We thank you again for your support monetarily and verbally. Stay safe. Sincerely, Joyce Fields.
That's a good note to end on. Thank you for sharing that. Everyone has a copy of that letter. If there's no other business, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
This is Chip Lynn. City of Loudon Mayor Jeff Harris joins us now. And Jeff, on Monday night, another city council meeting.
It sure was, Chip. We had a very productive meeting again tonight, I think. We discussed several things, dealing with the planning services that the city has taken on now. So we've got things in order there to proceed going forward, provide that service for our city planning department. So we'll take that in-house. We also made, passed some budget amendments, which could include potential additional parking downtown, also some decorative lighting projects that we're proposing to do to some of the downtown buildings, which we think would enhance, enhance our downtown area. So we made some of those amendments tonight as well. We had to table a few things for some further discussion, but we'll bring those up at a later date. And we did welcome our new Public Works Director, Michael Hogan.